The Bristol Board of Education. Maintaining a safe and secure learning environment for all students.
Good evening, everyone. It is now seven o'clock and I will call this meeting officially to order. The first thing we're going to do is rise for the National Anthem. It is being performed tonight by the Bristol Eastern Madrigal Singers directed by Michael Cador.
(Singing) Oh, say can you sing? For the daughter in life was so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose bright stripes and red stars drew the perilous fight. All the rivers we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of their friends?
(Applause).
Hi. I would like to give this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. They did an amazing job. It's now my honor to read our meeting norms. All participants will actively participate, engage in the work of the meeting, and have equal voice and airtime. We will assume positive intentions by respecting and honoring the diversity of opinions, beliefs, and perspectives. We will cultivate trust by being honest and focus on ideas, practices, and the work, not people. Norms will be upheld during all meetings and in all interactions outside of formal meetings. I'll now turn it over to Dr. Carbone, who will do the staff and student recognitions.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to introduce Principal Mr. Sonstrom from Northeast Middle School and one of his fabulous students, Giovanna Hatcher. And Mr. Sonstrom will explain why we are recognizing Giovanna today.
So I have the pleasure of introducing Giovanna, who wrote an essay for a contest in Ms. McGinnis' Language Arts Class sent by Senator Chris Murphy. So in a day, she whipped up this essay and it was sent on, and she was the winner, one of the winners in the state. So she is here to read her MLK essay to you tonight. Come on up, Giovanna.
Have you ever thought about what life would be like without Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., or how some dreams wouldn't be possible? Think about a dream for yourself. I already know mine. My biggest dream is to be the first biracial woman president. I would not be able to accomplish that without Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. I especially wouldn't be able to come close to being a president because of the color of my skin, not my character. I wouldn't even be able to shake hands with anyone. I wouldn't even be able to vote because of my skin color. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. changed history for all of us. Now I will be able to vote when I'm older and get to run for president, too. Now I don't have to worry about being affected when I run for president because of my skin color. I'll be able to shake hands with anyone I want without having to worry. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. would support me all the way through, and he would think that I'm doing the right thing. That is why my dream wouldn't be possible without Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. stepping up to make a difference.[295.66][295.66](Applause).
So Giovanna, great job. Thank you for representing us so well. Thank you for representing Northeast Middle School so well. And you have quite a fan club with you, so thank you for representing your family so well. The second staff recognition for this evening, I'd like to invite up Melissa Mashad Maltese. And we are going to explain some of the work Ms. Maltese has been doing over the past couple of years, and then exciting new opportunity for us. So the first relationship, due to the relationship that Dr. Galloway has cultivated with the State Department of Education and the program called Troops to Teachers. So first, just a little bit of background for the folks who don't know much about the Troops to Teachers programming, and then our exciting new adventure.
Okay, sure. So Troops to Teachers is a program that was established in 1994 through the Department of Defense to help transitioning veterans seek out roles in the education field. By this, they take educators from the field already and help them match their expertise that they have had prior in the service, as well as what they would like to go into now for their teaching career. So that's a little snapshot of the program in itself. So you would be getting highly qualified individuals who have previously served and who are really excited to get into the education field in all facets.
So due to the involvement of both Dr. Galloway and Michelle, Michelle has been tapped by the State Department of Education to be the teacher in residence for next year, for the next two years. So could you just give us a brief overview of the responsibilities of a teacher in residence of the Troops to Teacher program?
Absolutely. So part of what I will be doing is meeting with program coordinators at all of the state universities, and UConn is also a new addition to the program. So I will be meeting with the program coordinators to assist any veterans that are currently attending school there, to make sure that their needs are met in terms of, you know, finding out the certification process for them, if they need a mentorship within a school district, and also recruiting people for our district, which that I'm very excited to do because we could always use, you know, veterans, I think. You know, there's not too many of us. Right now, there's 70 in Connecticut that are in the program. I'd like to see that grow into more. I know that myself, it's taken me a while to realize that I wanted to be an educator. I wouldn't change it for the world. And I am excited to help other veterans see how great that they can transfer their skills into the education field, no matter what subject they teach. So that's my little synopsis.
Well, congratulations, and we look forward to our continued involvement with the program. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very well.[483.28][483.28](Applause).
The next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes for our January 8 regular meeting. You have all received a copy of the minutes in your packet. Are there any corrections or any abstentions? May I have a motion to approve the January 8 regular meeting minutes as written?
Some of...
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to committee reports, the following committees have met over the last month, and it's pretty much all of them. Shelby, would you like to discuss communications that we just had?
Sure.
Okay, wonderful.
So the Communications Committee met, and we discussed four agenda items. We discussed partnerships with United Way PLTI, Parent Leadership Training Institute. We discussed the Welcoming Schools Initiative, QPR training, which is a suicide prevention training, and we had an update on the communications position for the district.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the Finance Committee. Commissioner Bieber?
Thank you. Let's go to the next one. Good evening. The Finance Committee met January 21 and January 29 in budget workshops for an in-depth budget presentation from the administrators, as well as a projected food services budget. And I want to go off script for a minute and say this was an absolutely phenomenal presentation. I don't think, I've been on the board for three terms, this is the beginning of my fourth term, and I don't think we've ever had that in-depth of a budget presentation. So kudos to the admins. As schools provide a service, we don't manufacture widgets or anything like that, the overwhelming majority of the increase is in contractual obligations. That increase is about 2.88%. Other increases, such as utilities, supplies, transportation, and other things, mostly come in at less than a quarter of a percent. There was discussion about our priorities and the vision of the graduate, indicators of success that we strive to meet, Bristol demographics, AP enrollment, career pathways, climate and culture, cultivating talent, organizational effectiveness, among other things. There was much more, and a very detailed presentation on grant funding. On February 3, the committee met and unanimously voted to move superintendent's proposed budget to the full board, so it now becomes the full board's budget. This recommended budget has an increase of 4.98% for the 2020 to 2021 school year of As far as the budget update for the current school year, we will be meeting next Wednesday, February 12, and we will report on that at the March meeting.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Operations. Commissioner Carlson.
Good evening. The Operations Committee met on January 17, 2020. Items we looked at were fields and facility rentals, outside groups renting our school fields and the facilities. We're trying to make sure we cover the cost of these rentals. The rates are ultimately going to be set by the Policy Committee, but we received an update of rental rates from surrounding communities, Suddington, Farmington, Plainville. Another item we had a look at was IT tech support. We're informed of a need for additional IT tech support. The workload of the, the IT workload is getting a little bit strained. We currently have six techs working on our schools with a workload of about 1,800 devices per technician, so that's a bit much. So we're going to look at, I believe that's going to be moving to, what committee is going to take that ultimately?
It's already taken out.
Okay.
Personnel, personnel.
The other thing is Northeast Middle School, ceiling tiles. Anybody who's been in our schools know we have a problem with a number of buildings that have, they're old, they're built in the 1960s, and things are starting to fall apart. Northeast Middle School ceiling tiles, we received bids for replacement of tiles, but the bids came in higher than expected, so it's going to be rebid, slightly different parameters, but we do have to get that done because we can't have ceilings falling on the kids' heads. That's it.
Thank you. Personnel did also meet, however Commissioner O'Brien is not here, so we will table that discussion until next month. So we will move on to policy. Commissioner Giantonio?
The Policy Committee met on Wednesday, January 22. We had a brief discussion about the governance of the Policy Committee. We approved our minutes from the last Policy Committee meeting, which was in September the 9th. Because the members of the committee were different members, it was prior to the election, we approved it in draft format. We had some discussion over several policies, and one was our school calendar for this year, and a discussion around the 2020 presidential election year calendar. The primary is in April, April the 28th. Thank you. And you'll see that particular policy revision coming up later on in the agenda for the full board to consider. There were three other policies that we discussed revisions on. One was Policy 3515, which is the fee schedule for the rentals. That was referred to the Policy Committee from the Operations Committee. We discussed Policy 5111, Students' Admission and Placement, where we had an age change from 16 to 17 in order to bring the policy into compliance. And Policy 5112, Student Ages of Attendance, Some Language Changes, and bringing it into compliance. Those three policies also, those three recommended policy revisions also appear later on in the agenda, and Dr. Dieter will give us some more detailed information about what the recommended revisions were.
Thank you. And last, but certainly not least, the Student Achievement Committee met.
Thank you, Chairman.
Student Achievement Committee did meet on January 15, and we discussed three items. The first item we discussed was our SAT scores and PSAT scores from the fall and last spring. We looked at our results, compared them to prior years, as well as compared them to other contiguous towns and other peer towns. The second item that we discussed was EdSite, which is, EdSite is Connecticut's web portal that provides all the data for all the districts in the state of Connecticut. And Mrs. Fortin led us through a tutorial on how to look at and find information that we might be interested in comparing ourselves to other districts, how much money does we spend versus someone else spends on athletics, or staff, or administration. All that information is out on the website and has quite a bit of information for us to use in our decision-making at the board level. So Mrs. Fortin did a very nice job taking us through that information. And then the final item that we had a discussion about, Director of Athletics and Wellness, Mr. Casson had a, one of our students and parents request to come before the committee and talk about a co-op hockey opportunity. So Mr. Casson led us through the opportunities, the challenges, and how that might work or not work. And we discussed that quite at length, as well as, you know, understanding what the cost would be, as well as the impact to our students. So no decision was made, and Mr. Casson was going to provide more information, see if the partners that he was looking at really are going to have space or not, and whether we have the capacity to do such a co-op arrangement. We all should be mindful that this wouldn't just impact the hockey situation, but there are other people out in other sports that might have a desire to have a co-op situation. So this decision really can't be made in isolation to understand the context of those other opportunities and challenges. So I'm sure there'll be more discussion about this item as we move on into the coming months. And that concludes the Student Achievement Report.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Next up is my chair report, and I'm going to keep it brief. I'm going to second what Commissioner Bieber shared, which was we had a very robust, very detailed workshop by our executive team here, and I will say that it was carefully, meticulously, and conservatively crafted, bearing in mind the unique needs of our district. And when I say needs, I cannot emphasize that enough, they're not wishes, they're not desires. Of the 4.98% ask, 2.88% as contractual obligations that we owe to our staff, leaving 2.10% to innovations in education. Once this budget is moved and accepted by the full board, it will be presented as the Board of Ed recommended budget. That will be on March 18 at 6:00 at City Hall. I would encourage as many friendly faces out here to come to that, to show support for what is our most precious resource, our students. Thank you. Next, we will move to the Student Representative Reports. Representing Bristol Central, we'll have Madison LaPreece.
Tonight, I'll be discussing the happenings at Bristol Central since our last meeting. Just recently, we saw Semester 1 come to a close, with students taking their midterms on half-day schedules from Monday, the 27th to Thursday, the 30th. Excuse me. Okay. To prepare for midterms, Central held two cocoa and cramp sessions in the week preceding the tests, in which students could go to the cafeteria and receive help from teachers, other students, and tutors. Thank you. And they also could have hot cocoa. The January Extended Rambley focused on how to study and prepare for midterm exams, and one of the February Extended Ramboles, which was today, focused on our B.C. mission statements, where students would make a paper and then draw like a demonstration of their mission statement, and then write it out, and then there will be a big board in the school of the best ones. Students began to follow their new quarter-three schedules this past Friday as the new semester began. Overall, the transition went smoothly, and we now have had two A days and two B days on the new schedules. Volunteers helped hand out Semester 2 schedules the morning of the 31st. The junior class held two fundraisers this month, one at Chili's on the 21st, and our annual talent show, Central's Got Talent. The show had eight acts and even some participation from our staff. Funds from the two events will help lower the costs of tickets for this year's junior prom, and a raffle is being held for the junior prom, where multiple winners can earn prom-based prizes, such as a dress, talks, or tickets. And winter sports are approaching the midseason mark with a trend of success. Boys' basketball won two landmark games against Eastern, and Lewis Mills, yeah, and Lewis Mills on the 24th and 27th. Girls' basketball saw a win against Hartford Public on Monday and will play Middletown tomorrow. Track and Field had a meet again at Hill House this past Saturday. And teachers of core classes have been providing underclassmen with information for course recommendations for the next year. And Central is proud to offer several new science courses, such as algebra-based physics at the UConn and accelerated level, botany, astronomy, oceanography, and meteorology. A course listing sheet from the Program of Studies has been sent home to aid students in the selection process, and we look forward to a busy month. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Next up, representing Bristol Eastern, we'll have Drew Dophney.
Bristol Eastern has been off to an exciting new year, and I will be reporting on the activities and events that occurred this past month and also in the upcoming month. Just last week, Bristol Eastern had its midterm exams, which brought the first semester to a close. And while it still remains a while away, we are also preparing the junior class for the upcoming SATs in March. And on January 6, we had an orientation for the upcoming freshmen for the next school year, which provided an exciting informational night for the eighth-grade families. Winter sports have continued throughout the month of January, and teams are soon going to wrap up their seasons or head into postseason play. Boys' basketball, indoor track and field, boys' swim and dive, and cheerleading are all playing throughout the next month. The boys' wrestling team has continued their recent tradition with a very strong season, along with the girls' basketball team. Each team will soon play rival Bristol Central as we approach the last few games of the season. To raise money that will benefit local animal shelters, a BE student created a pet supply drive that went on from January 2 to the 10th. There was also the first BE cornhole tournament, which was another fundraiser that took place January 19 to support the Model UN Club trip to New York City. An upcoming fundraiser we have on the 14th of this month is the Valentine's Day Dance at Nucci's for Project Graduation. And we also just held a karaoke night at BE, open for all students and staff, which had a great turnout and was very fun. And similarly, there was also a coffee house at BE by the choral group Strawberry Fields, filled with snacks and music. The first annual talent show will be hosted by Bristol Eastern Theater Arts at BE on February 27 at 7:00 p.m. And we are excited to begin this second semester, and we hope it follows after the success and achievements of the first one. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Dr. Carbone, who will give her superintendent report.
Good evening. I hope I am not redundant regarding the budget. I will go into the budget towards the end of this evening's presentation. I want to just remind both our board commissioners and those who are here this evening and viewing that all of our work is driven out of the mission and vision of the Bristol Board of Education and the Board of Education goals. And one of those goals highlighted this evening is obviously to secure necessary funding through public and private partnerships, and there's nothing more important than the superintendent's recommended budget becoming the Board of Education's recommended budget. To highlight the work that has transpired over the past four weeks related to our district priorities, this is to complement last month's presentation, where we discussed the priorities, and I highlighted the indicators of success for the next five years. How do we monitor those indicators that we're holding ourselves accountable for and to ensure that students receive the best possible education? It is just through that monitoring process. So I am happy to share that we conducted our first learning walk using our North Star 2, which is holding high expectations in classrooms with our instructional coaches, and we talked about math coaches for next year. So our administrators from the elementary level and our coaches in both literacy and math were able to have, participate in a professional learning experience, looking at instruction across the IV drive, using a tool that we're saying are good practices, and that is both professional learning for both the coaches and administrators, but more importantly, allowing the staff to actually celebrate some of the successes of what they're implementing and one of the asks that we had of them this year. Additionally, our Coaching Academy continues. We are into our fourth month of our Coaching Academy, where we're norming our practices across literacy and mathematics, as well as from pre-K to 12, so that our teachers are receiving similar feedback in a coaching cycle. And then lastly, Dr. Dieter, myself, Erica Triani, and the leadership teams from Green Hills, Northeast, West Bristol, and Chippin's Hill Middle School are conducting climate learning walks, looking at the elements of North Star 1. And in North Star 1 is how do we build classroom environments for all students to feel comfortable and reach high expectations. And so we're purposely looking at our beginning teachers from year zero to four to provide feedback and support the climate work that's happening at each of the buildings. We have completed Chippins and Northeast, and we will finish this week with Green Hills and West Bristol. So exciting, exciting work. And even more exciting that our teachers and our administrators are able to climb in and out of each other's rooms, so that teaching is not just isolated, that everyone can see best practices across the district. We highlighted one of our programs. Thank you to Dr. Galloway, who really champions the work around cultivating and inspiring talent and bringing talent into the district. There are two different ways that we're doing that. One is through the Troops to Teachers relationship that we've established with the State Department of Education, and the other is a new program that Dr. Galloway will champion, which is Teach for Connecticut, and it's cultivating our pair of educators who are interested in entering the teaching profession. And then to highlight some of the new partnerships that we are just launched and cultivated and one that's coming up. One, Jamie and I have had the pleasure of working with folks from Bristol Hospital for us to expand our workplace experiences within the hospital, not just in the CNA profession. So that is exciting, and the partnership also with Tungssys around the expansion of the CNA and bringing that program back into Bristol High Schools is extremely exciting for us. Additional partnership with the Bristol Hospital and the NWACP is a shadow day for our Bristol Central and Bristol Eastern students in grades 10 and 11. Four students from each of our communities will shadow in different areas within the hospital and be able to have a full day interacting with doctors, nurses, and folks from respiratory therapy. And then lastly, our expanding our supports within our schools using a partnership with Connecticut Health Center. They are looking to secure grant funding so that we can have onsite in Southside, Chippin's Hill, Bristol Central, Bristol Prep Academy, and West Bristol. Additional mental health services for individual counseling, family counseling, and it fills a void in our programming because we do need to increase the amount of services that we can provide to our families and students. So that's an exciting partnership that is on the horizon, and it will complement the work that we have already cultivated with Wheeler Clinic. Wheeler is one of our partners, also providing these types of services, but they have a hard time filling all of their clinical hours, and so we do need additional supports, and we're excited that school-based health services... And we're excited that the school-based health services, the Community Health Center will be able to champion that work for us. And then as previous was mentioned, we presented the superintendent's recommended budget and I will in a moment highlight what does that include in monetary fashion. But for, for folks in our viewing audience, what are the innovations or staffing changes that would result in this budget? And there are a couple really exciting things. To expand our math coaching, we have four math coaches. We will be expanding by adding two more math coaches at the elementary and middle level. We will expand our library media science programming. Right now, we have one library media specialist to serve all of our elementary schools. With this budget, we are recommending four. And then for our high schools, adding a .5 CNA instructor and a .5 career workplace experience educator. As I mentioned before, the CNA instructor is vital for us to bring back the CNA certification at the high schools. And our .5 career workplace educator is so that our students who are experiencing, are having opportunities to experience workplace placements that we have someone who can supervise those opportunities for our students. And then lastly, this budget will include the elementary dean of studies that we've just been able to add this school year and recently through using our alliance funds. And then lastly, the increase, as Commissioner Carlson mentioned, an instructional technology technician. So where does that leave us in totality? Later this evening, the superintendent's budget will become, if so voted on, as the Board of Education's recommended budget. The total recommended budget for fiscal year 2021 reflects a 4.98% increase from the current budget of $115 million to $120,773,659. As mentioned, the majority of this increase is driven by a 3% increase in employee benefits and salaries due to contractual obligations and a 1% increase in student tuition and transportation. The remaining .998, hundreds of a percent, supports innovations and enhancements in programs. This budget demonstrates alignment to our district priorities, a responsiveness to the requests and needs of our staff, administrators, and students, and shows a commitment to maintaining and enhancing our district's climate efforts, academic programming, and operational demands with an ultimate aim of being, of leading towards systemic improvement. Lastly, I believe that this budget reflects both our current needs of our district and is both financially responsible and forward-thinking.
Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, items 8 dot 1 dot A through 8 dot 1 dot E.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Wonderful. The motion carries. Thank you. I believe that Dr. Carbone wanted to briefly discuss a few things from the consent agenda.
Yes. I am excited to introduce our newest member of our administrative family. So I see, I see Tanya in, in the audience. I'm going to invite you up to the podium. I would like to formally introduce to the community, Tanya Bowles, the new dean of studies for the elementary. And if you would like to share with us just a little bit of your background and we're really excited to have you with us.
Thank you. I'm excited to be here. I actually have something else written up, so now everything that I studied so I can get it exactly right. Now I have to switch it up a little bit. So I've been in education for 16 years. I started out as a school social worker and I eventually moved into administration and I've been interim supervising vice principal at K-8 and three K-5s in Waterbury. I've also done some teaching at post-university and I am a self-published author. I write children's books in my spare time. So I would just like to say that I am so honored and excited to be part of the Bristol Public School system. I've heard such wonderful things from staff and from family members who actually have children in the system. So I've got, got to hear about the wonderful things that their children have experienced here. So as the elementary dean of students, my goal is to use my background in social work and the work that I've done under school climate and culture as far as bullying and things such as that, to work collaboratively with parents, students, educators, and community resources to, you know, create opportunities for our children to achieve socially, emotionally, psychologically, and academically, creating hopefully lifelong learners. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on now to public comment. Mrs. Everett, are there any public comment participants tonight? No. Okay. Don't be shy, folks. We really want to hear what you have to say. We will then move on to deliberated items and the district leadership team reports. Up first is Dr. Dieter.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The first item for deliberated items is an item regarding the current school year calendar. The policy committee met and had a conversation about the presidential preference polling that is going to occur on April 28th in our schools. There was a discussion regarding having that be a day that we close. So it would be a hard close. Staff would not attend. The primary reason being the number of visitors that we have in and out of our school and the safety concerns with having that number of people in and out of our buildings on a regular school day. So there was a, there is a recommendation to make that change to the calendar which would result in our last day of school, if my calculations are correct, would now be June 18th. Pending any other weather-related cancellations.
Not going to happen. Tomorrow. Never seen that where we're getting a nice storm tomorrow.
So I believe we would, in order to proceed, we would need a motion.
I will entertain a motion to amend our school calendar.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. We will have no school that day.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to have Mrs. Brown.
This is to advocate for your support for the addition of an IT tech specialist to our team. As Commissioner Carlson had reviewed, currently we have a total of six technicians that serve multiple schools and an average of 1,800 devices per tech which is exceedingly high for the industry. Upon an analysis, our city IT director who is with us this evening believes that the school system needs at least three additional technicians to support the equipment we have in place. This would be the first step toward that goal. It's also a perfect opportunity to update our job descriptions which really no longer reflect the high level of work that is performed by the various skill members in our staff. We'd like to standardize the role across the school district. We expect that the amount that we would need to request from the city would be between 12,000 and 16,000 depending on the start date.
So you're looking for a motion as well for that, correct?
Sorry?
So you're looking for a motion as well?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make that motion to approve the hiring of the new IT tech.
I will second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we'll have our quarterly enrollment numbers update by the Honorable Dr. Galloway.
Put a little stride in my step right there. Good evening, Commissioners. This will be a quick and succinct report. The net change in our student growth from the last time I stood before you in October to now is eight students. That's the big drama right there. I will however, go through each school just so you can hear how the numbers have moved since the last time I reported out. For Edgewood School, the current count is 290. In October, it was 285. Hubble School, today, 408 or January 408, October 410. Green Hills, for up to fifth grade, 626 and in October it was 637. Ivy Drive, 381, October 374. Mountain View, 349, October 345. Southside, 505, and in October it was 507. Stafford School, 384, and in October 376. West Bristol, 602, in October 608. The elementary class size, K-5, as you can see, is just under 22. Moving to Chippens Hill, Green Hills, and Northeast West Bristol, Chippens Hill, 757, and in October, 762. Green Hills, 307, October 301. Northeast, 480, steady at 480 from October. 319 for West Bristol, 316 in October. Moving down to the high school, January count for Bristol Central, 1,197. In October, it was 1216. At Eastern, 1097, October 1096. Our current count, 8,376. In October, it was 8,368. That concludes my report pending your questions.
Dr. Galloway, for the classrooms that you gave, the classroom size indications that you gave, I'm interested in high school. We've talked about it in the past. Are we trying to keep except for mandated classes on no single-digit enrollment?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Vibber. It's a very familiar question. And to answer your question, yes. I know Dr. Carbone has scrutinized that, those numbers along with the high school administrators and they, they do have their eye on that and they're working on that still.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Brown, you're up next. Come on up and discuss the schematic design for the Stafford roof project.
Good evening. We actually have our project manager, Mr. Tim Callahan, here this evening to talk to you about this motion.
So we're, we're in the process of working through the documentation for the Stafford roof. And as you all are aware, we're putting photo votakes on that, on that roof. Tonight, we need a motion which is part of the state filing requirements. So when we go up and file with the state, there's a checklist of things that we have to do. And specifically, there are certain motions that need to be made by, by the city council, by the Board of Ed. I'm going to read this motion as just for you to approve us moving forward the project so we can file. I'm going to file next week for the grant, but this is just one of the many things that we have to go through for the checklist. So I'll read the motion. The motion resolved that the Bristol Board of Education authorizes at least a preparation of the schematic drawings and outline specifications for the Stafford School roof replacement project to include solar panels and mechanical upgrades at the Stafford School located 212 Louisiana Ave, Bristol, Connecticut, and forwards this request to the city council for final approval. So that's the motion. It just has to be approved.
As the board member on that committee, I will move to approve.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Through the chair. What other mechanical upgrades are you doing?
Typically, on all the roof projects, we like to replace some of the fan units on top. And what we do is we, as we're doing the roof, we replace those units instead of taking them off and putting them on and we, we put them through the project. It also allows us to have all of that area warranted. So the woofer owns the warranty. They contract, they contract the mechanical guys to put that in and we own that as all part of the project. And the same way with the photol, the PV panels. Silver Petacheli is doing the work. They're doing all the design work. They're doing all the load calculations. They're doing the roofing work. So it's all intertwined and the contract will be issued to one contractor for the mechanicals, the roofing, and also the PV panel. So everything is warranted under their, under their umbrella. Makes it simpler for us.
Okay. I just want to comment. It's been my observation, I haven't worked on a lot of mechanical projects like that, heating, ventilation, and all that. When you do remove old equipment and reinstall it, that's when it breaks. So I will hardly support replacing fans and stuff like that because that stuff will be old and certainly would fall apart.
Right. And that's exactly the problem. We've had connectors and so forth and the unit doesn't work after you put it back up there.
They always burn out six months later.
Yep. We've had that before. So we've done this in the last probably four roof projects.
So we're motioning to apply for a grant to do this project?
We're applying, some language to apply for a grant, yes.
And then who's paying for this?
Paying for what's that?
This project.
Oh, the percentage is the state will be paying for it.
So it won't come out of us?
No, we're, we're paying approximately 44% of the project cost, which is 2.5 million.
We are?
Yes.
It's part of the cap.
Yeah. It's all, yeah, it's been approved through all the city council.
Have we picked a contractor yet?
Pardon me?
Have we decided on a contractor?
No, we're going to go out to bid shortly though. We'll be doing it this summer. The work will be done during the summer. Kids aren't there. Easy to mobilize, get the work done. We'll probably be going out to bid, if I can remember, probably in April or May. And then we'll be awarding the contract shortly thereafter. Starting work of student school closes. We usually mobilize the beginning of June, get the, whatever we need out there, start to mobilize. And as soon as the kids leave, we, we start the work. The biggest part of that roof project is to get the glue and the membrane down so we don't have any little spells in the building and the kids come back. That's the major portion we want to get done. But it looks like we'll get it all done by the end. There may be some closeout stuff that we do as we continue, as we continue on.
So you think we'll be punched this stuff when the kids are in school?
We can do that if we need to. We've done it before.
We won't delay the openings or?
No, no, we won't. You're welcome.
Through the chair? Sure. Traditionally, there used to be summer programming at Stafford School every summer. I'm assuming that's being moved to another location.
It's going to be moved to Bristol Eastern.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Now that we've had discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Dr. Carbone will now come up to seek approval for the superintendent's recommended budget for the 2020, 2021 school year.
And I'm going to...
Or be seated and do it.
If you don't mind. So I am seeking your approval of the superintendent's recommended budget and that the recommendation, the recommended motion reads as that the Board of Education accept and approve the superintendent's recommended budget for the 2021 school year in the amount of $120,773,659, which represents a 4.9 increase to the current operating budget. Approval of this motion will result in the budget as presented being, becoming the Board of Education's recommended budget and as such will be presented to the City Board of Finance on March 18th, 2020.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We are very happy to have this turned into our collective Board of Education budget, recommended budget.
Next on our agenda will be policy revision. Dr. Dieter?
Thank you again. The first policy up for consideration this evening is 3515, which is fee schedules and rentals. On your device, there is, there are accompanying documents. You will see language that is either blacklined, which would indicate that we would be removing the language. And then any text that is in red is language that is recommended for consideration. So what to notice in summary form would be that we eliminated the fee tables that were embedded into the policy, and we created links within the policy because the fee tables are dependent upon contractual information. And rather than updating that within the policy each year, if we have the link, it would be done automatically and creates inefficiency. We did make adjustments to group definitions. Again, we wanted to be sure to create inefficiency, and because we have a structure in place for our facilities, we adopted a similar structure for our fields. And we further identified what those group definitions are. We made some, the recommendation is to move away from language of local groups to be more specific about residency and residency requirements for groups in Bristol. We added a non-discrimination statement, which is important for any entities that are seeking to rent or hold events on our properties. And we added information that would empower the athletic director in collaboration with the superintendent to adjust the proposed fee schedule at the request of anyone that is seeking consideration. The field fee, the field fee table is included. And I will just briefly review that. As Commissioner Carlson stated earlier in his comments, we're looking at a structure that was commensurate with what our fees are, as well as looking at what other contingent towns are charging. So Group A and B, with respect to grass fields. Group A and B, these are our local nonprofits with 90% or better makeup of Bristol residency. For grass fields, we would continue, we would move forward with no charge. There'd be no charge for those groups to use our grass fields. Any individuals that are in Group C or D, and these are primarily groups that do not comprise 90% or better residents, or are for-profit groups, there would be a $50 per hour charge as well as another fee if, in the event, there was significant cleaning that needed to be done, cleaning or maintenance after usage. Turf fields are a little bit different. For turf fields, there would be a charge for Groups A or B. That would be $25 per hour. So we're looking at our turf fields at both Bristol Eastern and Bristol Central, $25 per hour for use of the turf field. And if lights were to be used, there would be a $35 per hour fee assessed for Groups A, B, C, or D. For those groups that do not meet our residency threshold or are for-profit, the charge per hour to use turf would be $150 with a $35 fee assessed for use of lights. We also determined that it would be appropriate, given the volume of applications and the work involved in processing these requests, that any request would also be assessed a $5 fee for processing. So an organization could make a request for multiple days, but if it's one request, it's a $5 fee for processing. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. We are recommending the changes for approval.
Through the chair, I just have a comment. I know we discussed it. I'm just trying to scan through here. I know it's got to be in here somewhere. I appreciate the consideration of the superintendent and the staff that'll be administering the fees, that there is an opportunity for organizations that serve people with disabilities tend to be more regional type of event coordinators, and they wouldn't necessarily always reach the 90% threshold. And so there is somewhere in here the ability for them to apply for an appeal against that rule so that they can still be able to use our fields or rental facilities without being overly burdened with making sure they had 90% from Bristol residents. So appreciate that addition into the policy.
That is number nine of, within the policy, it's on the last page. Supervisor Athletics, Physical Education, Wellness, in collaboration with the superintendent, can recommend an adjusted rental fee schedule.
Okay, thank you.
I'm looking to entertain the motion.
So moved?
I have to go.
Oops.
To what you were saying, the 90%. What's going to determine? Because if you allow one, you're going to have to allow all. So it has to be, in my opinion, it has to be a set number. If you start going, "Well, I like you, but not I want you to pay", it starts to get into a gray area where it becomes a problem.
I was just bringing up, I was just bringing up the topic that we were discussing, and that was a for example. But I was appreciative that we at least have some latitude in the policy where we're relying on the professional discretion of the administrators in order to make those decisions.
Right, and I appreciate that. But what I'm saying is if we start, if you let one person off the hook, as they say, and someone says, "Well, how come they got it and I didn't get it?", then it turns into this, all this was for nothing, because then it's just going to be like, "Well, now what do we do?". That's all. I like consistency. I like knowing what I can and can't do. So, and I mean...
I think having the opportunity for, we have the fee schedule, and if I use past experiences with how we do rentals with other facilities, it is extremely rare that anyone asks or petitions for dispensation to what the policy is. So I would, I'm going to lean more on the side that it would be very minimal request. But that, taking into consideration Commissioner Gianantonio's request when we were talking about the policy the other evening, that for some of our nonprofits that do work that need to pull young adults or young children from regions so that they can have sponsor on different activities, that would be something that Mr. Cassin would bring to my attention and would make decisions.
I believe we're looking for a second to the motion?
Second.
Any continued discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. I moved. I can't second.
I'll second.
Okay. No more discussion? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Next policy up for consideration is Policy 5111. This is a policy regarding student admission and placement. The purpose of this policy is to establish guidelines for admission and enrollment in Bristol Public School programs. And what to notice with the changes here is that there are some additions and deletions, and they are simply for clarity and compliance with state and federal laws. The additions and deletions are with respect to ages of enrollment, excuse me, with ages for eligibility with kindergarten. It illuminates what the withdrawal process is and changes to the age in order to be aligned with state law. And it provides language for how to request residency hearing if residency is in question. We do recommend approval of the revisions.
So moved.
Any discussion?
Yes, please. Dr. Dieter, is there a way that we can tell by looking at this what the changes are? I see some things are highlighted. Does that mean it was deleted or changed or?
So is this the blue form that you're?
I'm looking at 5111A.
Okay. Can I look, can I look over here?
It's the blue one.
There's two blue ones.
So I'm going to, off the cuff here, if there's a strike through, it's a removal. If it's highlighted, that's new text.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's important to note that the subcommittee spent a lot of time reviewing and discussing so that when we get to the Board of Ed meeting, it may appear that we're moving through rapidly. But it's important for everybody to recognize that members of the subcommittee and members of the public that are interested do have an opportunity to weigh in on questions or thoughts or concerns regarding any of these policies.
So I believe we've been motioned and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you very much.
The last policy for this evening is Policy 5112. And this policy is specific to ages of attendance. And again, simply, we were, the purpose of this policy is to establish guidelines in admission, for admission and enrollment to Bristol Public Schools by age. And the additions and deletions here are for creating clarity and compliance with state and federal laws. I believe you have the information on your, the policy on your device. Again, I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Questions before?
Can you do that?
Okay. Yes, please.
Sure.
I noticed in prior policy, there is, at the very beginning, I'm not going to read the whole sentence, but there is something that says, "Without discrimination on account of race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, or gender identity or expression." I don't see that in the next one. Is there a reason why? And I don't see that in 51112. 51111 has it, and 12 doesn't.
So I can speak to the difference?
51111, because that is a policy regarding admission and placement, and that's, it's a broader policy around the process of admission and placement for students. 5112 being specific to age of attendance, it's not necessary to appear within that policy. The language around non-discrimination appears in many of the other policies of the Board of Ed. And the subcommittee did discuss whether or not it needed to be within this policy. And I believe there was unanimous that members felt that because it appeared frequently in other policies and that because this policy was regarding age of attendance, that it was not necessary.
I kind of get that because it's simply the ages.
Correct.
Nothing else. So it doesn't matter if you're black, white, yellow, purple.
I want to be very clear that the fact that it does not appear there does not exclude any. Okay?
Right.
That is not the case.
Whereas in the other one, in 111, though we certainly wouldn't want it to happen, there are loopholes where people could exclude someone.
So once you have a non-discrimination, we have a non-discrimination statement that includes and is not limited to race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, or gender identity expression. Nothing else then precludes it in any other. That is the way we conduct ourselves, and therefore, everything else is in line with it.
Okay. And I agree with that. I just, I like to see it a lot. I think it's something that is important, and we should have in any policy that is applicable. That being said, your explanation about 12112, I do understand that because this policy about the age is very, very explicit. Okay.
Do I have a motion to accept the revision to Policy 5112?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is new business, and there is none. So we will move rapidly to building reports. Dr. Dieter, I don't know why you came back. Head right back over.
Getting my steps in.
There you go.
So the first report that I'll be managing is with respect to the Memorial Boulevard Inter-District Arts Magnet School. The work here continues, and I recognize that most of the work that's happening there is confined to spaces and places that are not in public view. So people may be wondering what's happening. And what I thought I would do is give you a summary of some of the activities that occurred just within this past month. And these can be found in detail in the Memorial Boulevard draft minutes from our January 23 meeting. So in the previous month, we have completed D and D, we have a complete D and D set. That's on file in the facilities office at the Board of Ed. So you can drop in, hang out with him, and he'd walk you through the floor plans, the exterior plans, any questions that you may have with regard to the project. Those plans are available on the second floor. We've been doing forensic and site soil analysis. That's been ongoing. There's digs throughout the property in order to understand what is there. With the current proposal, there will be an excavation, and we need to understand what's in the dirt before we begin to move it. There's been mapping of the site and sewer drain lines. And through that process, we understand that there's some sediment because those lines haven't been in use for a number of years. So we've been working with the Bristol Water Department on a schedule to jet those lines, clean them out, and get the water and other stuff flowing the way it should. Mr. Callahan has been working with our architects as well as state representatives to review our application paperwork. And we understand that we're up to date, and everything has been submitted at the appropriate timelines. The construction team met with state planners just this past week. We talked about timeline. We talked about budget. We talked about the constructibility process. So again, more activities and efforts that are going on with regard to the project. If you've been over to that site, you might know that there's a USGS monument, a medallion on the property. And when you have a project of this scope, that needs to be taken out while the construction is happening and then brought back. So that process is rather lengthy in the process for application. Mr. Callahan has been working with a contractor in order to secure the appropriate documentation and process for moving on. As I mentioned, test borings have been completed at the site for the soil, and the environmental analysis is in process. Within the building, we've been looking at lighting designs. Within the theater, we've been looking at other aspects of the theater and building in order to recognize that acoustically, we need to maintain some structures in order to get the maximum benefit for production. We've made a final decision about the theater ceiling. It's going to be replaced with curved drywall rather than sound clouds or removal. We've had an approval of the kitchen layout. Office of State Construction Grants and Revision has closed the proverbial window with the State Historic Preservation Group. So we are moving forward there. And we've had our construction managers working with our architects to look at, again, performing a constructibility review. And that's where you reconcile the proposed... a constructibility review, and that's where you reconcile the proposed project with your budget and ensure that everybody's on the same page. And we've dotted the i's and crossed the t's in all details, and aspects of the project are accounted for. And then lastly, we have our expenditure report, which is balanced each, or not balanced, it's filed each month, and Mr. Callahan presented on that. And again, just gives you some indication of some of the work that's ongoing, happening on a month-by-month basis, but that because it's in places that aren't visible to the public, you may not understand. So that's my report for the Memorial Boulevard project, and I will answer any questions that you may have.
Through the chair. Dr. Dieter, you said this past month, you met with state planners to talk about timeline and budget. Were there any significant differences in timeline or budget that was discussed?
No, we haven't, we don't have any significant changes to either of those, you know, by way of understanding where we're at. We do anticipate that in June, we will be moving forward rather quickly with remediation of the site. The timeline for us to move in, project completion is looking at March of '22, with students being welcomed for the start of that school year. So there's no substantial changes to the timeline or with the budget. We're still operating on a $63 million cost.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again. This is the Stafford School Roof Update. Our remaining schedule is as follows. Our last committee meeting was on January 16th, where we reviewed our progress to date. The structural survey and forensic process is complete, and we will now, with your approval, just earlier this evening, will seek state grant funding. Construction documents and specs are underway, and we plan to review these at our next scheduled meeting this upcoming February 20th, 5:30 p.m. Following will be to review plan completion and cost estimates with the state. Pending their approval, the project will go out to bid in a March-April timeframe. Once bids are reviewed and a contractor is chosen, we then will seek city council approval, and we are on track to begin construction in June with substantial completion at the end of August. Once again, this project has a budget of $2.5 million. We have a reimbursement rate of approximately 44%, and that includes the non-reimbursable HVAC mechanicals. Any questions on that? Okay, seeing none, I'll move on to the Southside School Mechanical Upgrade. This committee also met on January 16th, reviewing the progress to date. We received the project manager update and an update from Weston and Sampson Engineering. The design, development, and construction documents were completed at the end of January, and we now are awaiting the associated cost estimates, which we will discuss later this month. Pending the completion, the committee approval of, excuse me, pending the completion and committee approval of the cost estimates, construction documents and final bid specs are to be completed by the end of March. Project will go out to bid in April with an award timeline for sometime in May. And again, we're on track to begin construction in June and complete major interior construction in August. Our next scheduled meeting is also February 20th at 6:30. Any questions on Southside HVAC? Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will now move on to information and liaison reports. I'll start first, if anyone has information to share. I'll start at my rate.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Jen. I'm happy to report, and I'm sure many parents are going to be happy to hear, that incremental theater renovations at both Central and Eastern are going to be getting underway. They're actually already in process, not the work itself, but we're going to be sending out to bids. We've received some rough numbers, and initially, we're going to address the theater stage curtains. They are in need of replacement. I believe it's been approaching 20 years, and there's flame retardant that is reapplied, but it's at the point of no return. So those are going to be addressed. The initial numbers look like $80,000, 40 for each, but we're going to see, put it out to bid, and see if we can improve on those numbers. And also, it's gratifying, Dr. Carbone, to see the level with shared services are advancing. Just prior to this meeting, Dr. Carbone agreed to help out the city with a situation which developed and had to be addressed right away, so we're appreciative of that. And an estimate on the reciprocity of savings with the services is that it's approaching $100,000 right now. Public Works has assisted the Board of Education with tree cutting. There's been drainage work at Eastern and Mountain View that included civil engineering as well as excavation and construction. And this work would normally had to be sent out, but it was handled internally. And Public Works has helped the Board of Education with vehicle repairs on snow removal equipment, instead of once again sending it out. And the Sewer Department has jetted out sanitary lines at several schools. So it's really working well, and we're happy to see that. And the Director of Facilities, Peter Fusco, is also working with the Department of Public Works to assist on multiple renovation projects. And obviously, we discussed the IT techs earlier, and that is going to be very helpful as well. Peter Fusco was recently at the Capitol Improvement Meeting, and he spoke of the gym floor at Northeast Middle School needing replacement. Now, this was initially installed in 1961, and it was showing signs of buckling. So it's very aged, and there is some concerns with asbestos underneath, obviously, 1961 being the construction of that floor. So that is going to be addressed as well. And it's looking at the approximate cost, including hard and soft cost, is going to be in the area of $300,000. So that concludes my report. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Commissioner Crosson, any information? We'll get to liaisons next.
Then I have no information.
I'm making a rainbow shape. Okay. Commissioner Giantonio, information?
No information.
Okay.
No information.
Yes, I do. You know, a lot of important people have born, or important things happened the month of February, and you might think about birthdays and people, but actually, today, this month, is IDEA's birthday. It was established 45 years ago, and most of the people of this day is probably, didn't even experience school prior to IDEA, but Eric and I did, and we know what it was like. And so IDEA is probably the most, I've heard people say it's the biggest civil rights legislation that's ever passed in this country. I don't know if I'll go that far, but it had a great impact of making our schools much more inclusive, and I think we should remember it and understand it, and it probably hasn't been funneled the way it should have been by the federal government. But having said that, I think it still had an important impact on our schools and bringing people into our schools and integrating them and making them part of the schools that weren't in the schools before. So I just wanted to note that.
That's awesome. Thank you. I'll start with you. Do you have a liaison report?
Just a quick one. There's a legislative breakfast on February 20th with Hartford Area Superintendent, the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, and the Capital Region Education Council. Obviously, the legislature in Hartford has a lot to do with what happens in education. We have a very proactive education committee in the legislature. This is a short session, so only bills come out of committee. Theoretically, individuals can't put out bills, so hopefully, they won't do too much harm this year, so, but it might be worth having that conversation if you're free at 8 o'clock on February 20th.
Yes, I can report out on Chippens Hill Middle School. I spoke to Mayor Elise Metus, the principal, and she was excited to tell me about two things that happened that were student initiatives. One was a Connecticut Association of Schools Student Leadership Conference that she sent a group of young leaders, youth leaders, to attend at Sacred Heart in January. They talked about building climate and acceptance, communication, making a difference at schools, mindfulness, taking risks, rising to the occasion, and social media safety and awareness. She said they had a great experience and something they would like to continue to do. And the second was their first-ever school-wide book read. One school, one book. They read Fish in a Tree in January, and there was time every week for the whole school to read at the same time. And the author came when they finished the book and met with the students, and she said it was a very exciting experience that they're going to continue to do more of.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I have two. Southside is busy working on climate and culture. They're using a lot of Mark Brackett's work. Permission to feel. There was a staff, parent, and myself, book club. I enjoyed that very much. I meant to bring the book, and I forgot. I'll try to bring it next month. And also, Mark Brackett's Ruler, R: Recognizing Emotions in Self and Others, U: Understanding the Causes and Consequences of Emotions, L: Labeling Emotions Accurately, E: Expressing Emotions Accurately, and R: Regulating Emotions Effectively. It's effective in all areas of the school, including the goal program. And they are also, they haven't done it yet, but they're looking forward to their One School, One Book adventure, and they've chosen a Jackie Robinson book. I do want to talk briefly about Bristol Eastern. I'm going to piggyback on your report, Joe, if that's okay with you. Thank you. I was invited to spend some time over there last week, and I was in a freshman algebra course, and it was really amazing what these kids were doing. They're doing illustrative mathematics. We didn't do that when I was in school. These kids, the teacher would give instruction, and then they'd work in groups, so there was student-to-student discourse. They all had Chromebooks, and they would solve the problems correctly, and they were showing me, they were going up to the smart board, and their hands were flying, and all of a sudden, it was there and it was done. It was really very impressive what these kids could do. I also visited an AVID classroom, and this was amazing. We circled up, Dr. Carbone, you would like that, we circled up at the very beginning, and they all talked about how they felt about their first semester. One of the students, this was great, I don't know if either of you have heard, but one of the students that afternoon was, he scheduled for a telephone entry on a scholarship he was waiting to hear from. So I'm interested, I'm excited to hear how that went for him. And the most rewarding part of my visit, it's actually attached in your agenda, but I think, there it is. Right outside the AVID classroom, this was a senior class. They have banners, and these banners have names of the colleges that these kids have been accepted to already. Some of them, and this is just a smattering of the colleges, Wheaton, Penn State, Trinity, CCSU, many, many more. And that's a very small part of the picture, because I don't have a fancy phone, I was only able to take a regular picture. It went on many feet on both sides. These kids are amazing, absolutely amazing. The AVID program is wonderful. It's changing lives, it's changing families. I stood outside looking at that, and I was in tears. It was, I said it, it was amazing. Very, very impressive students. And I learned, I didn't know that until, I didn't know this until that visit, that we have interns that went through our school system, that went through the AVID program, that come in and are interns in the AVID classroom.
That's the design of the model?
It's phenomenal.
We're very proud of our AVID program, and we're proud that Mrs. Fortin is figuring out a way to expand it back to where it belonged and where it was in our middle school back in the day. So we will be able to complement your AVID students at the high school level.
That would be great, really great. It's a great program. I think it's probably one of the top best things that our school is doing. I'll stop.
I don't have anything yet. I have something to explain to Stafford and, but what I did want to address was, Mrs. Sees, that we are working, and these guys are working hard to find a replacement for your fifth grade teacher, all right? I know I'm going to be upset about it. We're all upset about it, trust me, so. I just want you to know, I'm on record that I'm not happy about it, and it's going to change, because you can't have teachers leaving midstream. It's not good for anybody. So I just want you to know, we're working on it, all right? That's it.
Thank you.
I have two liaison reports. First is the visit I had with Mrs. Levasera at West Bristol School, and she was happy to report that on Friday, January 24th, the West Bristol School Student Advisory Council hosted their very first dance for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students. The students serving on the School Leadership Council planned and facilitated the entire event, which went, which was very well-attended and enjoyed by all. The PTO hosted a family dinner and bingo night, and the winter band and chorus concerts were also held during January. All events were well-attended and enjoyed by all. My second liaison report is from the Greater Bristol Special Education PTO. On Tuesday, February 11th, at 6:30 at the Bristol Public Library, they will hold their next meeting, and this meeting will be about preparing for PPT meetings, providing some training for our local parents, both within Bristol and the local region. Attorney Melissa Gagny will be joining the CTO Board there. She guides parents through the entire PPT process and how to prepare all the way to what you should do to follow up after the meeting is over. Whether it's initial PPT meeting to determine eligibility or an annual review, the attorney Gagny will be there to help provide tips and walk you through the process and prepare you as much as possible. It will be a roundtable discussion format, and the event is expected to run until 8 p.m. All are welcome to attend.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Dowsky?
So I have a liaison report for Ivy Drive. So this is for December and January, if that's okay. So this, well, first, let me tell you. Ivy Drive has a school-wide positive behavior system, centers around PRIDE. PRIDE stands for perseverance, respect, integrity, diversity, and enthusiasm. So in December, they celebrated, or, yeah, they celebrated I in PRIDE. Daily social-emotional learning lessons were focused on around integrity and what it means to show integrity at Bristol and within the Bristol community. On December 13th, the students wore pajamas to school to benefit CCMC, and students raised $400 to benefit the hospital. Additionally, they held a toy drive during the month of December, and they were able to donate 12 huge boxes full of new toys to local charities serving the community. Moving on to January, they were looking forward to hosting Northeast Middle School Express Series, who were coming for a concert, and also, they entered into PRIDE. Yeah, their PRIDE letter for that month, and also, Yoga Day was on January 24th, and each grade level was given a half hour in the gym with a certified yoga instructor with yoga techniques in an effort to support and enhance our mindfulness and emotional regulation toolbox.
Excellent. Commissioner Crosson?
None.
Okay. I will round out the liaison reports by speaking on one of the new schools to which I
I will round out the liaison reports by speaking on one of the new schools to which I will be liaising, and I'm very excited, because I'll get to spend time with some littles at the Back Center. In February, they will be continuing to work on preparing students academically and socially for kindergarten. They will also be welcoming many new students who are transitioning from the birth-to-three system into the Bristol Public Schools. Additionally, they will be visiting with the Senior Center to sing some Valentine songs and share some special Valentines with them during their Valentine lunch, which I'm sure will be enjoyable for everyone involved. That concludes liaison reports. Lastly, we will have a vote to convene into executive session. I need a motion to convene for the purpose of discussing the superintendent's evaluation. So moved. Can I have a second? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I will see you upstairs very shortly, friends.